Thank you. So, we're going to move on to approval of the planning commission minutes.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry. We're going to move on to roll call. There you go. Commissioner Andretti?
Here.
Commissioner Dickerson?
I'm here.
Commissioner Pratt?
Here.
Commissioner Seifert?
Here.
Chair Hernandez? Here. Okay. Now, we're going to move on to the approval of the planning commission minutes of March 2nd, 2016. Can I get a ... did you guys get a chance to review? And if so, can I get a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Move on to number ... public comment period. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commissioner's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. Any public comment? No. With that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is approved with one motion. These items are read only on request of the commission members. Should anyone, including members of the public, wish to discuss or disapprove any item, it must be drawn from the blanket motion and considered as a separate item. So, we will be bifurcating some items.
Madam Chair, if you would, I would ask that the items number two, three, four, and five be removed from ... I'm sorry. Five be removed from the consent calendar at this ... or at least bifurcated. And all the only matter that we would vote on would be the send retire permit as part of the consent calendar.
Okay. So, can I?
Second.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So, as I understand, the direction from the city is that, is that Chair Dickerson would take over the balance of the consent calendar? And you would recuse yourself, Madam Chair, since that's what you've done on other matters involving units?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct. If you just announced that you have a conflict and the reason for the basis of the conflict.
I have a conflict. There has been financial resources within the last 12 months.
Source of income from one of the applicants?
From one of the applicants within the last 12 months.
Given that, we are going to take the remainder of the consent calendar, which is items number two, three, four, and five. And I'm looking for a motion on those.
I'll move that we continue the ... all those items as they're requested to March 30th, 2016. So, I would approve the balance of those items two, three, four, and five as requested.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstentions?
Stay.
Motion carries.
Good deal.
Pass the gavel.
Okay. Move then on to item number six. The Harvest Glen Permit Amendment at the southeast corner of South Blosser Road and West Sonia Lane. We can get the staff presentation.
Yes. Madam Chair, members of the planning commission, this is an extension request by Williams Homes for a permit they received approval in 2014 for 126 homes. The site is on Blosser and Sonia near the new elementary school. Normally, extensions aren't brought as public carrying items, but I just want to give you a little bit of background, partially because we have two new planning commissioners. So, this project was ... has the site plan up on the screen and is in your packet. It is a single-family development. There are two types of homes. There are some ... I forgot, the pointer doesn't work. There are some smaller, more narrow lots that will have homes like these on those lots. And those are in the middle of the subdivision. There's some open spaces spread throughout. And then around the perimeter are what the applicant and staff are calling a four-pack. There are packs of four homes and a driveway in the center of it. And these are elevations of ... approved elevations of what a typical four-pack would look like if you were facing the front of each building. Now, some of these views, like in particular this view, you will never actually see from the street because there will be a house in front of that. You will see a side view of the garage, but it's just up there for information. The reason we're sharing more on this extension is that as the developers going into preparing the building permits, they do have a new architect and some of the designs are going to be changed. Staff will be working to ensure that the intent of the commission on the level of quality here is retained. If we don't believe it is maintained, then we will bring parts of it to either a study session and get input, or if it's a large enough issue, we can bring it back to a formal hearing as an amendment. But I just want to give you that information so that you're aware. This is the first extension request on this project. As I said, they are starting to work on their construction drawings, so we believe this will be the only extension that they'll need. We are in full support of the extension and recommend approval.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, a quick. So, as I understand, is the only amendment to the permit is an extension of time within which to complete it or start?
At this time, the only amendment to the permit is changing when the permit expires.
And so, how much time are they asking for?
The ordinance only allows an extra year at a time, and so they're asking for one year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I got a quick question. Do you have a sense that they're looking to downgrade in any way the project? I mean, one of the things that we ... when we saw the project originally, they wanted to put a lot of houses in these units. I mean, these things are kind of squeezed in, but the charm of the actual architecture of the different detailed pieces and that sort of thing kind of mitigated that. And so, I know it's for this commissioner, I mean, that was the give and take. Do you get a sense that that's going to change in some way?
I believe that they ... that the builder, as all builders will do, will look for ways to make sure it's a balance of cost and impact of the detail. The applicant at this point has said that they are going to work with us to make sure that the level of detail is achieved. Okay. Thank you.
Question? No question? Okay. Do you have a question? The page three, three, future revisions. So, I understand they changed their architect. And the staff will ensure that the modified architecture is keeping with the architectural concepts. Did they change ... I know that you're going to be very detailed, but did they change the big concept? Because that's not ...
No, I mean, the overall site plan is not changed. There's a subdivision map that was approved. It's set. The things that might change are some details, some of the forms of the buildings, some of the use of certain type of treatments such as the windows, the sizing, and the location and such. Some of these things naturally do happen when they go and start the structural drawings and realize they made a room without enough space on the wall to have the bed and the dresser and such. And some of them are that the architectural drawings that you see here are made to look more graphically appealing. And the line drawings, the construction drawings, don't always exactly match. So, it's going to be a balance of trying to make sure, as stated in the condition, that the intent of the commission was met.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any comments from the applicant?
Nope.
Okay. With that, if I can get a motion?
I'll move for approval of Amendment A 2016-0002.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to item number seven, which is a plan development permit for Element Christian Church located on the south side of Mercury Drive between Autopark Drive and State Route 135.
Thank you and good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Again, the project before you is a plan development permit for Element Christian Church. I'm going to try to be very brief because we believe that Element Christian Church has done a pretty good job. The project site is 4.05 acres in size, located on the south side of Mercury Drive between Autopark Drive and State Route 135, also known as Broadway or Orchid Expressway. Again, the vacant ... the site's undeveloped. To the north of the site, our retail commercial uses, a heavy construction equipment rental business hurts. To the east, our commercial, various commercial uses located in unincorporated county. To the south is a retail commercial shopping center under redevelopment, formerly an auto dealership, now Skyway Center, again, under redevelopment. Incidentally, currently, Element Christian Church occupies about 3,700 square feet on the generally the generally easterly building in that Skyway Commercial Center. And recently, the church has, again, purchased the four-acre site to locate its permanent home. So, that's the project site. Again, the site includes two primary buildings, the Worship Center, the main building, about 30,000 square feet in size. And right to the west of it is the youth building, a second phase, about 10,000 square feet in size. And again, associated, there's plazas, as you can see, pedestrian plazas located around the church campus, pretty substantial landscaping, and of course, required parking. So, in terms of development standards and zoning regulations, the project meets all requisite development standards. The project meets setback standards, landscape coverage, and parking. Landscape coverage is about 29 percent, which exceeds the 15 percent landscape coverage minimum. 163 parking spaces are required to accommodate the church uses, and 163 parking spaces are provided. Again, all setbacks are met. And incidentally, staff believes, again, that the site and building orientation is good. The main building, the primary buildings are located close to Orchid Expressway, so you get the visual presentation of the buildings next to Orchid Expressway or South Broadway with the parking on the interior to the west side. And the buildings themselves, that's, again, the primary worship center. Again, we believe the church did a very good job in terms of visual presentation. The worship center well articulated. Those two elevations are probably the premier elevations, the northwesterly elevation at the top and the southeasterly elevation at the bottom. So, all in all, we believe the church did a very good job. We ... staff believes that the project will actually be an asset, a visual asset at this location, and probably an asset for the community as a whole. So, staff does recommend approval. The project is a Class 32 exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. So, again, staff recommends approval of the planned development permit as outlined in the conditions of approval. So, staff will conclude our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do ... does the applicant?
Any questions for us?
Do you have questions?
I have a question. In the findings that we're supposed to make, there's a reference to building heights. And I don't quite understand it. Is this the height of the building, the tower's going to be higher than what our municipal code authorizes, or no?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner Andretti. The building and the church and the church tower, the highest element, do meet the municipal code standard. But we did want to put the findings in because literally, the municipal code says any building in the ... and the properties, that building is located in the PDC 2 commercial zoning district. And the municipal code specifies that the commission should make a finding that any building in excess of 40 feet in height, you need to find that it's appropriate. The C2 zone allows buildings up to 70 feet in height. So, the maximum permissible height is 70 feet. The tower is 60 feet. But in this particular case, there's a property zone PDR3 residential. And whenever there's a property zone residential, buildings in excess of 40 feet, you just need to make that requisite finding. So, the findings are there, and the heights do work.
Okay. Thank you.
Question?
Mr. Scott, could you show me the phasing? I called you earlier. We talked about it on the phone. Could you show me how that's ... they're talking ... I see here you're splitting the Worship Center in two phases.
See if we can do it without a laser. Oh, there's one right there. So, obviously, the primary Worship Center, a major portion of it would be built as Phase One, the church proposes. That is the primary, the main part. Secondly, that's the second phase, additional administrative offices. So, that's roughly just less than a couple thousand feet. So, the second phase is a pretty small addition on the south side of the Worship Center. Then the third phase itself would be the youth building, the 10,000 square foot youth building. So, those are the three phases, the primary Worship Center and the tower, administrative offices, and then the youth building. As a part of Phase One, of course, we've conditioned that all the infrastructure, parking, and everything landscaping goes in as a part of the first phase.
Are you going to require all the parking spots at this time, seeing how they're not utilizing them, even though they don't have all the seating at this time?
Yes, we will. And the church has agreed that all the parking, all the site improvements would be installed during Phase One. So, where the youth building would be, we'd have that hydro seating and landscape or some kind of ground cover in the interim. But all the other infrastructure, on-site and off-site, and all the parking would be a part of Phase One.
And can you show me approximately on the tower how the ... we're talking about future cell sites. How does that exactly work? It goes inside of the building?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Seifert, again. The tower at 60 feet in height could limit itself to not being a cell site. Wireless communication facilities come to us all the time and come to property owners all the time, wanting to install wireless communication facilities. We see it as an opportunity, possibly for the church, but an opportunity for the city as well, because the church tower, again, we believe is an attractive asset to the church, but it has the kind of height that could accommodate cell facilities and not ... and eliminate the need for people to want to do monopoles in the area. So, where does somebody want to come in and say, "Hey, to serve this area, we need a monopole"? No, just go talk to the church incorporated in the tower. So, no real monopoles, monopines, those kinds of things. So, it's a double nonsense in our minds.
And there was an inquiry from a telecom operator who didn't know this project was happening to put a tree pole in the general area. So, we tried to put the two together, and that might work out.
Excellent. Thank you.
Commissioner Pratt?
Just a quick question to make sure I'm oriented correctly. Could you go back one slide? Is the tower the larger square?
Absolutely.
At the corner?
It's the larger square, the top, far north. You see the square?
Okay. Thank you.
The tower.
That's the far.
Yeah. [laughing].
Maybe the applicant can help with that.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to be clear. I was moved your images around properly. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? No? Okay. With that, can we move to the applicant presentation? Is the applicant?
I think there was a question for you. State your ... Pete Newman, so I'd represent Element Christian Church. So ...
Could you give us your address, sir?
Yes.
5680 Hill Drive, Santa Maria, 934 Bye Bye.
And Commissioner Pratt, you had a question for the applicant?
I think the staff answered it, but just wanted to make sure that where the red dot is, is in fact the tower.
That is the tower.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think we've done everything. We've worked pretty close with Bill to get everything, I think, the church wants and the city wants. I think it is a pretty nice project.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? No?
No.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And now, we do have public comment. Jim Bray.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commission members. My name is Jim Bray. I am a member of Element Christian Church and have been a member there since the church first started in 2008. I just want to come ...
Can you state your address?
Thank you. I'm sorry. My address is 1031 Tarazo Way, Santa Maria, 934 Bye Bye.
Thank you.
And as a general member of the congregation, I just wanted to come before you and say, I think this is a very good project. It has taken a lot of time and effort to put the project together. I want to commend staff. I think staff did a great job of putting the permit together with the permit requirements. I think they did a great job. We have a very vibrant and active congregation that fully supports this plan. And I think it would be a true, true asset for the community. So, I urge you to support staff recommendation and approve the project.
Thank you. So, with that, we'll close the hearing unless there's something else from the commissioners. Okay? We've heard. And I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'll go ahead and make it. I move that we approve Plan Development Permit P 2015-0018, the Plan Development Permit for Element Christian Church located at the south side of Mercury Drive between Autopark Drive and State Route 135.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. With that, we're going to move on to number ...
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good luck. With that, we're going to move on to number eight, and I'm going to recuse myself because the applicant was a source of income within the last 12 months. And I will be back for number nine.
Will you? You're coming back?
Yes.
All right.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's see. We got number eight, Enos Ranch Track Map for the Enos Ranch specific area. And can we hear the staff's presentation?
Ladies and gentlemen, the next project before you is the tentative track map for the Enos Ranchos project. Going to give a second for people to clear the room. The project site is bound by Battles Road to the north, Bradley Road and Highway 101 to the east, Betaravia Road to the south, and College Drive to the west. Back in February, the planning commission heard this item as a specific plan amendment, general plan amendment, environmental document, that they overheard of the project and recommended approval to city council. And this is just the next portion of the Enos Ranchos overall many multiple item project. So, this is the tentative track map. The specific plan that was approved, the exhibit for that is shown on the left-hand side of the screen. And those were the general areas and uses that were approved through the general plan amendment and the specific plan. This map is just the next layer to the project, and it's taking that area from three parcels and breaking it down into 20 lots overall over this 113-acre site. So, the map is pretty straightforward. It just identifies the lot configuration and the street configuration as approved by the specific plan. It talks about what's going to go forward in the public improvement plans with the construction of the streets that will be being built, mainly the reconfiguration of Bradley Road and some of the improvements on College Drive that are going to take place. It defines the streetscape as far as the sidewalks and the parkways and what those are going to be designed and configured at, and the different lots that are going to be the different components of the project. Tomorrow at the study session, the planning commission is going to hear the details of Area 1 and Area 2. Area 1 being on top of the escarpment on the Betaravia side, which will be all of the commercial component. And then Area 2 being the Costco project just below the escarpment on Bradley Road. So, details of those components of the project are going to be heard at study session with hearings moving forward at the end of the month for those projects. That pretty much concludes staff's presentation. The applicant and staff are in agreement with the conditions of approval for this track map with the addition of some comments. There were handouts that were given to the planning commission. On those handouts, there were two additional conditions of approval that were going to be added to this package and some corrections and clarifications. Staff has recommended those additions with one modification to the second addition that's shown on that sheet. The second addition, additional condition that's shown, there's going to be one slight modification. We're removing the first two sentences. I'm going to read out into record what that new condition will be. It's going to say, "All striping and medians shown within the street right-of-way are not approved as part of this map. The final design of these improvements are subject to the approval of the public improvement plans by the Director of Public Works."
Can I, just for clarification, if I may, Chair? Are you talking about the additions or are you talking about the clarifications, corrections portion that you rewrote?
Good questions. So, this is in the additions portion. There's two conditions that are proposed to be added into the permit. This is the second of those additions. The rest of it, there's no changes being proposed, just to be read into the record and adopted into the map as so. But the second addition, the second condition to be added will be, "All striping and medians shown within the street right-of-way are not approved as part of this map. The final design of these improvements are subject to the approval of the public improvement plans by the Director of Public Works." The applicant is agreeable to this modification and these corrections and additional conditions of approval to the tentative track map. So, that concludes staff's presentation. Staff is recommending approval of the tentative track map with these additional conditions and corrections and modifications to the existing conditions. I'm available for questions, as well as the applicant's team is here available for questions.
Thank you, Nada. Are there any questions for staff?
I have a question.
Mr. Seifert?
Thank you.
On College Drive, that's going to remain consistent with the rest of College Drive, with the separated meandering-type sidewalks. And it's kind of large, and it's a lot of people jog and stuff. Is that the plan?
The plan is to ... the College Drive portion that's in front of this project, so on the east side, will have the 10-foot parkway, the 6-foot separated sidewalk, and then additional landscape behind it. There will be bike lanes on College Drive. And then the west side of College Drive, there are plans to improve that as well.
Thank you.
I have two primary questions. Just on the conditions of approval, just as an example, number 11, 12, 13, it is not clear who's responsible.
What page are you looking at?
Page number four. In the pink, conditions of approval, and I'm just using as an example 11, 12, and 13, but throughout, there are some other ones. And so ...
Because there are different people that would be responsible for that condition. Where the developer or subdivider is responsible for handling the condition at this time, it states that.
Yes.
For where it's specific development of a lot, whoever the developer of that lot is responsible for it.
Okay. I assume by the comments made earlier that everybody's in agreement on that.
Yes.
I just, the project can't go forward without these conditions being met, so it's a little concerning to read it and not know that.
Right. There are a layer of conditions that are going to be met immediately with the public improvement plans, like Bradley Road being installed, those street frontages being built out. There are some conditions that are going to be in effect in the future, like some of the ones you're referring to as the Battles Road frontage landscaping. You know, at such time as those lots that front Battles Road, they would then, when they're developing, meet those conditions.
Okay.
So, there's different phases of conditions that are going to go through as the overall project develops.
Okay. I just know early on that some of these very same things were issues, but I will assume that we will all get that taken care of.
Yes.
Okay. And my second question, this has not been said, but I noticed the information both on easements and on the abandoned oil wells. Does the 100 ...
What page are you looking at? So, we can all follow along with you.
Sure. Page number three.
Okay.
Number eight. My question is, do ... who owns the mineral rights since there have been oil wells there? Is it the surface owners at 100%? The surface owners also own 100% of the mineral?
My understanding is all of the oil wells that are on the site right now have all been abandoned and closed per the regulations of Dogger. And so, they've all been abandoned, closed, sealed off, you know, remediated, and there's what this condition is ... And there's, what this condition is, a pretty standard condition that you see in maps, is just making sure that if those aren't done to the standards of what they are at the time, do happen before any development occurs. The applicants have pretty much already taken care of all of this. And so those oil wells have all been abandoned, sealed, and shut.
I understand the physical, but actually, depending on the answer to my question, there's real property at stake here. And so maybe the project applicant wants to answer that?
The applicant, yeah. The applicant has mineral rights?
And perhaps there are easements for that, but I didn't see that.
When we have the applicant, then you can ask a question.
All right. Thank you. That's all I had.
All those postits, only two questions?
I know.
Good lord. Mr. Andrade, anything?
No, I don't have any questions.
I don't either. Thank you very much, Nettie. Can we go ahead and hear from the applicant at this time? Ms. Pratt, if you can state your name and address.
Lori Tamora, we're in Planning Concepts here representing the team, Nick Tompkins and Claire Semelis, Steve Semelis, Mike Bouquet, and we also have our design team here, including Russ Garrison and Lynette Noyes. And so first of all, we have been working with staff for about 10 months now in the design of this project. You've seen elements of it previously with the specific plan, general plan change, rezone application. This is one of the implementing tools to take the property down to sizes that ultimately become the base maps for each one of the different lots and development plans. And so we're really excited about moving forward in this action. You know, we've been working already with the staff on the public improvement plans. This is the legal document to sell off the different parcels to different entities, and we're moving forward on that. The questions that were raised by the Planning Commissioners, I'd like to address both of those. In regards to the conditions, 11, 12, 13, the important word in that is that the condition is tied to the Plan Development Permit. So as each one of these lots come forward, they will have their related landscaping plans, and will be working with the City of Santa Maria as well as the underlying ownerships along Battles Road to deal with landscaping along those sections. Battles Road bike trail area, the surface area, has a relationship with the City of Santa Maria for maintaining that area, but the installation will be a cooperative between the city and the development of both Lots One and Lots Two and Three, which are the auto dealership lots. So I hope that helps in that regard. In regards to this question that was related to condition number eight, these easements around the wells are standard practice for the city. It does not override the mineral owner's rights if they wanted to proceed with mineral, you know, pursuing their oil rights. But they wouldn't be able to do it in the City of Santa Maria. They could do it through directional drilling or some other options, but it wouldn't be coming on the site once it's developed.
Can I...
I may be able to change that just a little bit. The City of Santa Maria, in their open space zoning ordinance, which is parks, areas, and whatever does the open space, does allow for oil activity to occur. I don't think it's ever happened, but it is a provision for them to...
Okay. Just a follow-up. Have the mineral owners been noticed about this?
Looking all the way to the back of the room. This is Claire Semelis.
There is an existing oil and gas lease from 1943 from a company called Bel Air. It's on title and we can't locate them to extinguish it, so we're doing a title endorsement around it and plan on doing a quiet title after Estro closes.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Could you state your name and your address for the record? My apologies.
My name is Claire Semelis of NKT Commercial, 684 Higera, San Luis Obispo.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, we have...
Did that answer your questions, Pratt?
Okay. We have reviewed all the conditions. We had the opportunity to work with staff over the last couple days on some of those final refinements, and we are moving forward to meet the conditions already. And so we hope that the Commission, once you've had an opportunity to review this, will move forward with approval for the map. And I'm available for any questions.
Thanks, Mr. Seifert. Yes.
Lori, you've reviewed these additions?
Yes.
Okay. Those are okay with you all?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Any other questions from the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions from commissioners? Any additional questions by the commissioners? No? Any written communication? No? We do have a public comment, but it was, the only public comment is you, Lori, so there we go. I assume that you've made them all. And public hearing is closed. Let's bring it back to us. And any other discussions from the members? Otherwise, we need a resolution, and the resolution number will be 2683. Oh, I'm sorry, we have something from...
I just want to remind the Commission, if the Commission chooses to follow the staff recommendation, it is to adopt the resolution with the amended language on the sheet, except the second bullet as amended and as read into the record.
Okay.
By resolution number 2683, that the Planning Commission would approve tentative track map 6,000 TR 2015-0001 with the additions on, and the update of the language that was added to the record. Is that...
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrade?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
Wonderful. Good luck, folks, as we move on down the line. Thank you very much. Bring the wandering chair back into the fold.
We lost all our audience. One member. Thank you for staying. Number nine, 2015 General Plan Annual Report. We're going to review the General Plan Annual Report.
Yes. Don't have much of a presentation, just wanted to go over the fact that this is an annual report. It's procedural. It's a document that is turned into the state. For the most part, it's been used to, within the city, to look at the development trends. And in the document, we added a few slides, a few graphs to it that just shows over time how planning permits and development have increased since the recession levels and how various types of permits have run over the past few years. I think the big thing is, this is Planning Commission actions, and you can see from 2013, 2014, you know, to 2015, pretty much all of them are going up. This is applications received. And then on building permits as well, you can see applications received and issued going up, particularly a large jump between 2014 and 2015. We scheduled this on the agenda to give the opportunity for the public to comment on this, so that could be reported to the state. We're available to answer any questions.
Does the Commission have any questions? No questions from the Commission? Okay. Public? No? Okay. So with that, can I get a motion?
All meeting, we agree to the recommendation that the City Council receive the 2015 General Plan Annual Report.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries.
Congratulations, applicant.
Congratulations.
Number 10, can we get a report on City Council actions?
Yes. So first, want to go back to actually March 1st. I'm not going to go into too much detail, because we're going to talk about that a little bit at the study session, but the Council did look at Enos Ranchos at the specific plan, EIR, and general plan amendments and such, and did approve the specific plan. Areas where there were changes involved, trees and issues in the auto dealer areas, we can go into more detail at the study session. But overall, the project still has a lot of the strong elements that the Planning Commission looked for through all the study sessions. The commercial centers will have ample tree planting, but the streets on the commercial part, and Betaravia is going to have strong tree-lined streets. The architectural design is, we're hopeful, going to be viewed as the best new shopping center project in town. Lots of positives out of it. There were some things that were taken out, and as I said, we can go over that a little bit around the auto dealer areas. But overall, from staff's perspective, this is still a very positive project and very excited that it's moving forward. I think you noticed on the map, the discussion wasn't quite the same as it was when we were talking about the specific plan, because the map was really more of a nuts and bolts. And the nuts and bolts of the streets and such is working well. Last night at council, they reviewed three items that the Planning Commission had reviewed prior. One was an appeal, and two were recommendations to council. The appeal was of the telecom monopole at Ben Wiley, and the end result was the council approved the project on a split vote, but required that the project be disguised as a water tower. The applicant had a few examples of what that might look like, and so we have prepared a document that is based on what was given to the Planning Commission prior with the caveat that it has to now be a water tower design that is approved by staff. It is a little unusual that that happened in that way from a paperwork standpoint, but it's... There's still going to be paperwork and documentation for that item. The other two items were downtown permits.
That's not coming before us again, though, right?
No, it wouldn't come back.
Okay.
The other two were downtown permits. One was for the reuse of the office next to the Rite Aid for medical office, and that was passed easily. The Planning Commission also had a unanimous vote on that one. The other one was the Mulhautram mixed use, which did have a lot of discussion, a range of discussion. And the end result, it was approved, but there were some concerns about what the use might, the impacts of the use on the area and neighboring businesses. But we are so optimistic, and I think the Planning Commission saw, so that this applicant seems to have a good plan and strategy for making the project work. So he is now able to move on to the construction drawings and move forward.
Great.
I did.
Okay.
With that, okay, moving on to number 11, oral reports from the Planning Commission and staff.
I went to school. We went to the Planning Commissioners Academy, myself and Commissioner Seifert, and it was noteworthy and worthwhile. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for sending us. That was very, very welcome.
All right. You're all trained up now, so...
We know everything.
We know everything. We will look to you.
And nothing.
Okay. With that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
All right. That's it.